Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. The agenda is on the table, not the one that's in your back, in your mind. You'll take role, Kyle?
Yep.
Kevin? Lee? Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Okay. We didn't have any addition to the agenda, did we?
Just, just that bill.
Do we have a bill on the table that would be added to the bill list and it's on the table? One for, it was through Kaufman's. So, if I get a motion to approve the addition in the agenda. Kyle, second by Steve, will take role. Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
Steve? Okay, visitors. Pam and Nate Lerman, update on Lerman property.
Uh, the bad trailers have been moved out. We got rid of the tires from time ago. Uh, all but a handful of trailers have been licensed. Uh, waiting on the plates on those yet. And one of them is a brand-new trailer that's never even been inserted. Uh, everything's been moved around. We had tow truck in and the trailers that had sunk have been lifted. They're locked up now, nice and line. We got signs up, the trailers are for another sale. We've actually sold two trailers and have a couple pending, yeah. And, um, basically did everything you guys asked us to have done by November fifteenth.
Yeah, everyone all got license plates on them, well?
Go ahead.
Have they got license plates on them now?
Yeah, up-to-date license. Yeah, we've been putting plates on them. Actually, there's a handful of them that are waiting on plates yet for them. The plates are coming. Okay, so in the, in the letter that we received from the attorney, I'm just gonna bring this back up and refresh everybody's memory, that the, if that's the one that's on the table here, that it did say in there, the, you know, the attorney did recommend that this go to the Board of Adjustment, because he did not feel that the way it is zoned, that it allows for the staying for that. Right, yeah, I believe you should have it too. So, um, I mean, that's, that is basically the last step that you have, that's still, in my opinion, because that's what the attorney, that's what we need to complete. All right, uh, so you're saying we have to pay a hundred dollars and to go in front of the Board of Adjustments?
Yes.
All right. I talked to somebody on the Board of Adjustments, explained the whole situation to them, and they kinda laughed and said, "It sounds like somebody's trying to open a can of worms, shouldn't be open." If you had said earlier, Steve, that every property is getting treated the same, that there's being fair and everybody's being treated the same. So, with that being said, if we have to go in front of the Board of Adjustments, does that mean that you're gonna go next door and make that clinic go in front of the Board of Adjustments? Because that's zoned Central Commercial. But specifically, by your code, under industrial, it lists veterinary office and kennel. So they camp your business in Central Commercial.
If that's the case, if that's the case, then yes, Nathan. I did not realize that. Did not know that.
We keep going right next door. We've got a truck repair shop right next to that in Central Commercial, and it specifically says in your code, under industrial, truck repair shop, ladies and gentlemen. And then we're gonna go across the street to the grocery store, the guy that just bought that, who's wanting to do a car repair shop, and there again, under your code, it says, "And that's an industrial property," sort of thing. Then what I can't figure out is Brett Harms built his shop, what, twenty years ago or whatever? And that was zoned agricultural, got changed to commercial, but it specifically says, under your code, "Building shop, an industrial," which now it's a trucking business, truck repair shop, whatever, also under industrial. Then, well, kinda last but not least, not exactly that. You're gonna go tell Growmark, they gotta move their two thirty-thousand-gallon LP tanks, because that's just light commercial also, and that would be something that would be under industrial. And then not only that, if the city lot and you had to town, uh, for uses that the city uses that for, that would fall under industrial.
I don't think the city has to abide by the zoning for the property. I could be wrong, but I don't think, that's, that's not apples to apples with the city property, but I'm not for sure. But if that's what we have to do, if we have other ordinance or other places that are zoned wrong, then we need to clean it up. We, I did not realize that. I never, I have never grabbed the map and the zoning map and looked at the property and whence that farthrow.
Uh, also then, as long as they're plated, the trailers are plated, what difference does it make if it's commercial or if it's residential? What makes it any different than a car being parked in somebody's yard for ten years with a license plate on it?
Going with what the lawyer has recommended. That's my opinion. I mean, the council can do what they wanna do, but my opinion was, the last thing that was told to us.
I'd just say, I thought, you know, and figured out that it's, you know, there's no discrimination or anything like that going on.
Don't, I don't want any discrimination. I wanna treat everybody, if, if the code says that it needs to be this, then we need to do that. Otherwise, we might as well take the code book and just throw it away.
Well, I've already, I've asked a couple times, when did this code ever get adopted? Because it says, uh, in the code, your farm equipment dealership is under industrial. Well, why did that property get made, our property, get zoned commercial when the whole point of it, when it was originally, it became farm ground, it was zoned commercial for the farm equipment dealership in the first place? I've asked when this code ever got adopted, and nobody told me. We've been to the courthouse, and the courthouse only knows dates. They don't know what American things that, so, and without a date, courthouse can't tell us anything. And so, you know, it's almost like a city attorney that the city had at one point in time said, "Well, you need to update your code, and let's take this cookie-cutter code that we got right here, and maybe got adopted or something."
Who knows what happened way back then?
I, I don't know. I don't remember a lot of.
That's way before.
Saying, it had a, it to a, kinda seems like a, so, a whole lot of headache for a whole lot of people for.
It's the one. You guys have a zoning map in your books?
Where is it?
It's in there. Yeah, you got, everything's got one of them. You've, you've got one.
Yeah, I, I see. That one is, that one was adopted in some, in twenty-two, in May of twenty-two, but I don't know when the one was adopted of, when it was changed before that. Well, okay, the zoning map here, this one was the November of two thousand and five.
That's the one that we have too. We have the zoning required to that.
The code for the map?
Well, I'm assuming that the code was changed at the same time, but I can't assume that. So it looks, then must have been the, well, oh-five and? The original one was sixty-seven? 'Cause that's the three that we have in our books.
It should've been.
Well, this was.
It was Farm Equipment Dealership nine.
Was before, and well, it was before that.
Yeah. What, what the description was then, I, I don't even know if we would have that in the, would be in the records. I can't.
It said, I've only always known it just being, it was commercial and the.
Well, it says sixty-seven was service retail.
Yes, it was service retail. So when did it all of a sudden become commercial?
Or when did commercial mean that you really couldn't do any commerce? So was that one way?
Because oh-five and twenty-three is the same, or twenty-two. You know, if you look at them. Just to show. Seeing that was, that was before I even lived in town, so. When the two thousand and five one was put together.
And the attorney's letter, whatever, what he come up with, seems like just a way to create a whole lot of headache and hurry it for a whole lot of people in town, and basically saying that, hey, we don't really want commercial down. And, 'cause if you have commercial property, you really can't do anything commercial.
And why, why would, why do we have to pay to get this updated and changed when it's not how we, when Lerman Equipment was originally bought the property? It's not how it was intended?
Well, it wasn't intended, but semi-trailers are either.
It doesn't matter if it's commercial property.
You could, you could just move them out to, out to the farm and leave the signs up. I would just.
You're limiting business in town.
Well.
You want business, you want property tax income.
I'm just, I, I knew those were gonna get out and almost hire those yard boys.
That's what we're about.
Yeah, but we, we needed it, Craig, because what, it's not fair, and I'm not picking on you guys, it's, but it's not fair, or it's, it's, I don't wanna state this. It's easier to have somebody from the outside come in and look at things objectively, instead of having somebody in town, whether it's a council member or an employee.
But I've had several people come to me and said, "They've got letters, I can't afford to paint my house. I can't get nobody to come to paint my house. I can't get, I can't find somebody to come for the roof on it."
I'm curious what in-town people have got letters, who's actually done anything.
Yeah, who's done it? We're the only ones that are.
I got a whole list. I have a whole list.
I haven't, you know, just driving around looking at things. I don't see any things that have been cleaned up.
A lot of the little ones are, you know, it's, they're small.
Tires.
Small stuff.
Yeah.
Small stuff. I mean, we still have a long ways to go. Kid yourself, there's, we got a foundation now sitting there on Main Street. There's still many things cleaned up, but the house is tore down, but it needs to finish.
What's that?
That's our spreadsheet. With, um, with all of the, all of the letters that he's done, certified letters, what's, I think you guys in your packets right now have four letters from people that contacted us that are doing a cleanup, wanting you to know that this is what they're doing. And then.
In here.
No, it's on this one.
Yeah, yeah. You have those, I think there's four of them there, just from this month of people saying, "This is what I'm doing." And there's one that's asking for an extension, the painting one, is asking for, uh, to have a hearing to make, get an extension on painting the house. I think there's a letter in there for that. And then we have, um, but this is the spreadsheet, the current spreadsheet. And this, this is full. This is the letters up since November until now. And there's six of them currently, I believe it's six with lawyer right now, that you guys approved last month to forward on to get either, they had to clean it up, or city would take action on it. So there's six of them, six additional ones that have been forwarded on.
I mean, I thought we already had this taken care of. Like, get the plates, the plates on and get rid of the junk stuff that needed to go.
I thought the council ran things and the lawyer didn't.
But then you guys also voted to, that, for the final say, it needed to go to the Board of Adjustment.
That was last month.
That's if they wanted it rezoned, though, right?
No, that was because.
The Board of Adjustment can make the determination that everything can stay like it is, that it, it meets all of the guidelines and they're okay with it.
Yes.
That's what the Board of Adjustment does. And my, I think that's what I've been told, at least, you know?
Which it wouldn't, I mean, right now with the way it is, right?
That, I, I, I don't, I don't care what, I mean, either way, I'm, that's not my call.
No, but I mean, it would be.
They would look at whatever the zoning is and whatever, um, the zoning states in there, and then I think they've taken consideration the best thing for the neighbors, 'cause they have to look at all of that, and then they'll, they listen to whatever you guys have to say. I think they, they, you guys, they can go and take, not until the day they meet, then they can go and do a walk-around on it. And if they're all in agreement, then I, my, I don't know. I've never done one, I, the only thing I would do is take notes. I have nothing to do with it other than just take a note, and that's it. So, that's my understanding.
But again, why should we have to do that when it should've been zoned industrial? I don't understand why.
I know when they, when they do the zoning, and that, I've heard that from other people too. I didn't know this either. But I know when they do it, you got, you put a notice out, you have a hearing room by anybody, when you're rezoning, properties are doing a zoning map, the public is invited and notified that you're doing it, and that's their responsibility to show up for that. And if they don't, that's what, this is what kinda would happen, you know? So, I don't know what else you do differently than that. I don't know how that's done. And the zoning for this last one, when I was trying to figure all this out and get to the bottom of it, was done due to the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is where they send surveys out to everybody in town, and, and people in town, um, fill out the survey and state what they want to happen for Wyoming, the residents of Wyoming, your taxpayers do. And one of the biggest things they wanted, and I think, I was on council at that time, not for the zoning, but, and one of the biggest things that they wanted was, and this has nothing to do with you, I'm just saying where it came from, was it cleaned up, was the town cleaned up? So then we got EC call, 'cause we thought, hired, because we wanted somebody impartial, because you don't want council members or anybody else going out there and saying, "Well, it's my neighbor, it's my friend, it's my," you know what I mean? So that way, we have nothing to do with it. If it meets the zoning requirements and, and everything, then it's good, and they clean it up. In this case, if it doesn't, then according to the lawyer, the next step would be the Board of Adjustment. It's out of our hands. They do it, they look at it, if it, if it passes and it's what it should be, then that's what they go with, you know? We can't change the zoning.
No, but I mean, rather than go through all that, can't we just say, "Hey, if the grass is mowed, trailers ain't tipping over, they're plated?"
We're beyond that already.
Yeah, I think you need to look at that letter from him.
But, yeah.
You know, and, I mean, I don't know, because then the next, you know, I mean, you have to, I don't know, that's told it to you guys. You have to be fair with everybody that comes in.
I'm curious, anybody on the Board of Adjustments? What training they had to be on the Board of Adjustments? What, do they know different than anybody else or whatever?
Well, it's just, it's supposed to be a different group that's appointed by the council, and it's just citizens of the community.
It's always been that way. I think they get a packet, I know they do. When they go on, they get a whole thing, so.
And do their properties meet code and do they get letters?
I don't know. I, I'm not on the.
Need to get pictures of them.
If, if they, if they have issues, I'm sure they probably got letters.
Well, I'm more than.
If, if, say if they, if they were, somebody on, on the Board of Adjustments deciding on somebody else's property, but yet their property got a letter and they're not doing anything, would that disqualify them? 'Cause it really doesn't make much sense to have somebody that's got a property in town that's not up to snuff, and then they're the ones that's making the decision for somebody else's property.
But, but the issue is not necessarily whether it's clean or not, kind of the issue from the way I read the letter from the attorney, because I don't know this code back and forth and upside down. That's why we pay the city attorney, and I don't think any of these guys do either. The, the ultimate issue here is the, the city attorney does not feel that the way it is zoned at the moment, that the trailers can be there. So that's the issue that has to go to the Board of Adjustment.
Is it the way it's zoned, or is it the code that was adopted?
It's the way it's zoned, and, and how the zoning got changed, I, I don't know. I, I don't know what the criteria was.
We're never notified, ever.
So, I, like I said, I don't know.
I don't know, Nate, if they, I don't know, 'cause I don't know either. But I don't know if they have to, they notify individual, they put it out. It's just like a council meeting. I think they have to make that, that announcement saying, "Hey."
And there was nothing.
If it affects your property, you have to.
And, um, I think that they, they did the comprehensive plan and they put that announcement up, then they have hearings. They have a hearing, it's a public hearing, and it's, it's advertised as a public hearing. It's just like, it's just like when we have a council meeting and something's on the agenda, we don't, we don't have to notify every single person on the agenda, you know, or, or every public person that it might affect. We have to put the agenda out there and do it that way. The city couldn't afford to send a letter out to everybody in town every single time we had some, I don't think.
No, but if, if it has to do with their property, they should be notified that something, we, we didn't change anything to do with that.
But, and then the property's in your dad's name, correct? Is what the Lerman?
Lerman Equipment.
Yeah, Lerman Equipment.
Say we're never notified.
No.
Yeah.
I mean, that's like the flood plain, you know? For instance, my daughter down there got put back in the flood plain, you know? I wasn't, didn't know nothing about it, had no control over it either.
Yeah.
You've got six businesses in town that are in violation now. So, I mean.
And I think as we come to them, well, I mean, we, they, he's, he's still working through, you know, I don't even know the rhyme and the reason. He's starting a one-endedness going, is what it is, you know, back and forth, so.
Gana feels like we're throwing whatever at it to try to make something stick.
Well, let's put it this way, if they were sitting next to your house, would you like it?
Down the street, I'm there, whatever.
I know, I'm just saying.
It's a business.
A number of years ago, I ran into a guy, and he, I think he was from Mount Vernon, and he said to me, he says, "Where are you from?" I said, "Wyoming." And he says, "Oh," he says, "that's a nice little town." He said, "I come back from Bellevue on Sundays." He says, "A nice little town," but he says, "Why do you leave them trailers setting?" "When you come around that corner and see all them trailers, it just turns your nose up."
There's a lot worse properties in town, trailers.
You got a property on top of it.
It's got some junk cluttered on it, too.
Yeah, I know, I do, I, oh.
Well, I'm just saying.
How, how many properties in the city limits are zoned industrial? Do you guys know?
Um, we can look at this.
There is.
Easy if you look at it.
Basically nutrient, the lumberyard.
They're marked down at the bottom with the area then.
Most cities, when, by their code, "Commercial" actually means commercial, and "Industrial" means manufacturing.
Yeah, that's my, only question I have, is what, what does industrial, if something is zoned industrial, what, what does that allow specifically?
Could you bring, 'cause that's all online. Basically, everything that's uncommercial property in town.
Other cities, we've looked at their code, and industrial really does mean industrial, like manufacturing, other things. Commercial means our industrials. Wyoming's industrial.
Obviously, none of us were on the board or the council when this was zoned redone, so, you know, we don't know what the circumstances is. And I don't know what the statute limitations as far as records are that we're supposed to keep, to even know if any of the things, when it changed in oh-five, would, would be in storage.
That's just the map we have, industrial?
Yeah.
I don't even know if they would, the town would've gotten notified. Like you said, the floods, that's never got notified either.
That, that was done a little different, though. That was done by an outside organization. That wasn't done by the city. The city had absolutely nothing to do with the, the zoning, or the flood stuff. We just all of a sudden, here's the flood map.
Right.
Yeah, that's it, that's all we know. And then I know the friend that had the meetings.
This is just the commission, so. Do you want zoning regulations?
Probably, but what's?
Right here?
Try that.
Well, they're asking what the difference between.
I think this tells you. There it does, there's the industrial. So there's industrial, there's class, are you central commercial or what are you guys zoned up?
Central commercial is just downtown.
So you guys are just, are what, are what here?
Light commercial.
Light commercial. And the only difference between light commercial and central commercial is the size of the lot. So we're light commercial because our lot is much larger than a lot downtown, which would be central commercial.
I think this isn't, they have to have so much yard and so much building or something, I thought is what's.
So much yard.
Yeah.
Or park area.
Central, commercial, and light commercial. So here's light commercial right here. So garage is in building stations upon the approval of the board. And just in building stations. And opinion. So on G, it says those uses that in the opinion of the Board of Adjustment are of the same general character as those listed above as permitted uses and which will not be detrimental to the district in which they are located.
You also have a code that is one sixty-five point one-seven, non-conforming uses, that says the lawful use of any building or land existing at the time of the enactment of the zoning ordinance may be continued, although such use does not conform to the provisions of this chapter. Whenever a non-conforming use has been discontinued for a period of one year, such use shall not thereafter be reestablished. So this has been like this for over thirty years. The trailers have been there forever.
They started parking trailers there in nineteen eighty-three.
Yeah.
And Craig Eaton, remember that, those big bills trailers and stuff?
Exactly.
That's why those. Some of them have been parked there since like, for thirty-eight years.
Now that one, there's them, but he's been parking trailers there.
This has been happening since then, since before your zoning ever changed. So I would think that this would be continued, although it may not meet the zoning requirement.
It says in any future use shall be in conformity with the provisions of the chapter. I don't know. I mean, that would have to go to the lawyer. I'm not a lawyer, you know?
Basically, it says it's grandfathered in.
So, okay, so basically, well, as far as I'm concerned, what we need to do is we need to refer this to Doug and have him look at this, and then see if then it falls.
Grandfather.
Yeah, if it's grandfathered in. So that, that would be my opinion with, with this.
I think it says, though, if it's been discontinued for a period of one year, which means that if you didn't have them there for one year, you know what I mean? Then they shall not be reestablished.
Too bad, so sad.
Yeah.
Well, it's no different than apartments on Main Street.
In any future use should be in conformity. But you guys didn't, I don't know if it, I don't know.
It's been continuous use, and it's not, you know, the, the building is maintained.
The lawn's maintained.
There's no junk laying around, there's.
Come on, there's always been lots of weeds standing right up underneath the trailers and stuff that don't always get mowed. I mean, but anyway, that being said, I still think that we need to then, we should send this probably back to Doug with this, knowing, knowing that, you said, what, eighty-three? Yep. Did you remember the trailers were first started to be there?
But I.
I don't remember that.
I, I don't know, it's, I would've been in high school, so.
I don't, I don't remember when they went, I don't.
Actually, you've been a junior, you've been in elementary grade.
Okay, but any, so if it goes to the lawyer, anything that comes back, if it's official, we have to talk to your dad. Can you, will your dad give you like?
We have power.
We have power of attorney.
Okay, that's all we needed. That's what they asked, perfect. 'Cause, um, that's the one thing he stated. So you don't mind giving the city the, a copy of it so we can tell them they have it? Awesome, okay, perfect. Okay. I'll send this to the lawyer. Is that what you guys wanna motion for, or?
That was my opinion.
And then they stayed on there, put, that has been, put something eighty-three.
One sixty-five point seven. I've got that, and trailers since eighty-three.
And that was updated in two thousand and five.
I'm pretty sure, though, it's that. I'm pretty sure though, it's that empty for a while, after Marlin cleaned everything up down there after he went out of business, but. But I don't, I've, it's been so long, I can't, I can't remember.
I think, I think it's a good lawyer call.
Marlin went right into trucking, so there was always something parked there. Always trucks.
I don't remember that, but.
He said eighty-three, okay, okay.
The only other question or, it was, it was brought up in here, one of the places, and I, and I don't remember where it was. If you would just at least check to make sure they're not sitting in the right of way on the streets, you know what I'm saying?
Is there an alley that goes through there too?
No, we own the alley and the street.
That's what I thought, so many, I, I got asked about that, so I don't, I didn't, no.
I just, because originally, we owned what's now highway, it didn't, used to be, it used to be just a, a tarred street because the old highway, it wide, but from that, because Sheldon B. Keating's house, my parents built that house, we owned everything on the corner other than
Eggers.
Eggers and the car wash and the gas station.
So right now, we're just looking to see from the lawyer on, an answer on the one sixty-five point seven.
Yes, to see if this is grandfathered in because of that.
Okay.
And then, like I said, the only, that was my only other question, is I thought that there was something in one of, maybe it wasn't this one, maybe it was one of the other ones that he talked about. The conditions, he talked about, and I'm not saying the, the rest of the conditions of the lot, but I was just, the right of way is just one thing that kind of questioned me, to make sure that they're set back.
Yeah, they are, they're off the street.
Well, but out of, the right of way, whatever the right of way, and I don't know.
Well, there's a ditch there, that's why it's sitting in ditches.
If, if, if the right of way is ten feet, I, I don't know what it is there.
Bullish, so many feet from the center of.
Of the road, yes, yes, so. So a- anyway. Gentlemen. What are we doing?
We're here back from there.
I need a motion to send it to the attorney, if that's what you wanna do.
Yep.
Okay, do you have a second? Craig, take role, Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Okay. We will send that there and we'll go from there. And then, like I said, like Tammy asked, if you would provide a copy of that, so.
Yeah, you can email it to me if you want, that'd be good enough, and then I'll forward it to the attorney, so that you, that's all taken care of.
We have other visitors, do you guys have anything else you wanna bring up?
Why we're in that area, what's the grandfathering in thing? Like if somebody has a wood stove, if you replace it, is that in the grandfathering or is it once that goes out, it's out?
That was in the ordinances.
That's another thing we have to.
Dealt with that.
Probably how long it would be out, you're there immediately.
Because the ordinance changed and it was grandfathered in for a year under some.
Do you know?
Was it out right now?
Was under?
It was under wood stoves.
It just, it, it's somebody's.
Pretty sure it's specifically.
Replacing theirs. And then I need to know what the height or chimney is on it.
It has, that, I'm pretty sure it was supposed to be the peak of the neighbor's house.
That's what I talked to.
Above it.
Yeah, above, above the peak.
I've looked at that too.
Above the peak of the neighbor's house.
Our own neighborhood.
You gotta take pictures, need to come around and take pictures of the smoke in the winter time.
Yeah, I like, love it, fall. I, I know, I.
We had, we had one across the street from us and I had to put the windows on my house, so my kids' bedrooms didn't smell like there was campfire in it. And their eyes burned.
Yep, right there.
Existing ones or, yeah, because it's an existing one, right?
Yep, there was something about.
Permit required. Following, here's the, it can exist right here, do you see that, under one fifty-seven oh four.
I can't read it.
I can't read that part either.
It says, any outdoor furnace in existence on the effective date of this chapter shall be permitted to remain, subject to the following requirements. One, permit requirement, the owner of any outdoor furnace in existence on the effective date of this chapter shall apply for and receive an outdoor furnace permit from the city zoning administrator, administrator within six months of the effective date of this chapter. The permit for an existing outdoor furnace is not applied for within six months from the effective date of this chapter, the outdoor furnace shall be removed. And here's a temporary exemption, outdoor furnace is in existence on the effective date of this chapter shall be exempt from the provisions for a maximum period of six months from the effective date, after the six months, all provisions shall, shall be applicable except as provided in subsection three. You have to get a permit. And that's being compliant.
Thirty days, that is six months.
But it doesn't say.
There's the requirements.
Yeah. But it doesn't say.
Oh, right there, oh, no, nevermind.
Look here.
It's gotta extend at least sixteen feet above ground, at least sixteen foot. Located more than a hundred feet, but not two hundred fifty feet from any residence other than occupied structure. The stack must extend to at least seventy-five percent of the height of the eve line of that structure.
Okay, so that's, that would be the neighbor, if the neighbor's within a hundred feet of the stove.
If it's located more than a hundred feet, but not more than two hundred fifty feet from any residence. The stack must, must at least go. And I don't know.
And then they have to have a permit.
Mm-hmm. If they don't have a permit, I think it's, it's said that they, they have to, I think they have to.
If he takes out an old one, puts in a new one. And he's gotta re-permit it.
This permit shall specify the minimum staff or chimney height.
Saying six months, so, but that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be for that, would it?
Here's the enforcement violations.
Yeah, but.
If any outdoor furnace regulated in this chapter is installed, constructed, moved, maintained or used in violation or of any permit or regulations issued or moved. In any corner. What do you want, up?
Up.
This way?
Yes.
What do you, farther?
Yes, keep going up to the, right, right, right in here. Well, I would think right here, permit required, so allow the use of an outdoor furnace or install, construct or relocate an outdoor furnace within the city limits without having it.
And, but if you go to the existing, which they had one, but they took it out, they still had to apply for one and receive one within six months of the effective date of this chapter.
Okay, did it say how long this are good for?
And if it's not applied for within six months from the effective date of the chapter, the outdoor furnace shall be removed.
I thought all the permits are thirty days, all right?
It says within six months have to apply. Shall be exempt from the provisions of this chapter for a maximum period of six months from the effective date. After that, they're all applicable, so they had to, we have to look and see, did they apply for a permit? And then if they got a new one, they had to apply for a permit.
Not very good to understand that.
No. No, it's not, other than it does say it has to be seventy-five percent of the neighbor's use and, and if it's within a hundred feet of someone else's house.
Specific outdoor furnace at specific location, and it will expire. Please not to press, oh, that's if it ceases.
So they must have to get the permit, they have to get the permit every time they change the stove. Or unless they let it run for, or not use it for six months, or whatever that period was. Oh, if it ceases for a continuous period of two years or more.
So can we get, Kyle, is it online, would you? Where do you find that at?
Yeah, it's right online, this is our, is our site.
Good enough, we'll go find it.
So if you.
Chapter one fifty-seven.
Yeah, and if you go to, um.
So the grandfathering carries over to, if he was to replace it with a new.
That's my understanding.
Oh, I'm sorry, that wouldn't.
Then, then he just got to apply.
Gotta meet the requirements of the height and all that still, but.
Well, he was supposed to do that anyway with the old one, right?
Yeah, right, yes, because when, when this was enacted and.
That wasn't even close.
We went through that.
So if you, if you go to our website there and you go into, um, government and then go down to ordinances and you search it, it's searchable, so it's right on wyomingiowa.org.
Okay.
And I think I, you know, where you're talking about, so we'll have to obviously.
I'll talk tomorrow.
Yes, please.
Have a updated permit?
Yep.
It looks like it's another, that's a zoning thing too, looks like it has to go to zoning? Is that what it's?
Well, the zoning administrator, which should be right.
It's, okay.
Would have to verify.
Verify that meets everything it should be, okay.
Okay, is there anything else under visitor section? Nothing else, we're gonna move along, okay? Thank you for everyone's input tonight. And, all right, moving forward. Uh, consent and gentleman. Kyle, have a second, Craig, we'll take role, Kyle, Craig and Steve.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
Okay, moving on down to resolutions, number one, resolution approving the clerk filing with Jones County Treasurer for a mowing lien, property on West Green Street. A motion to approve. Kyle, have a second. Craig, we'll take role, Kyle?
Yep.
Kevin, or sorry, Craig?
Yep.
And Steve.
Yep.
I'm not, I'm used to everybody else speaking here. Okay, um, number two, resolution approving clerk filing with Jones County Treasurer for mowing and water sewer lien, property on North Washington, have the motion. Kyle, have a second. Steve? Hold on, Steve, role, Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Okay, resolution approving job description, which is in your book if you need to refresh, for the Hawkins Museum manager position. Craig, do we have a second? Steve? We'll take role, Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Did you want that position, Craig, or what?
Huh?
Thought maybe you wanted that position.
No.
Um, so motions.
Don't even like this one.
See, I didn't know what was.
Didn't, okay, so we, we don't have to do anything, we've already taken care of that.
Yeah, I didn't know what was gonna happen. Yeah, yeah, you guys are already going on that.
So we'll move right on to, uh, motion to approve alcohol license for traveling tapster, Hawkins special event.
That is for a wedding that they're having and, um, we need to.
October nineteenth through the twenty-third.
Yeah, it's only, they only need for one day, but they think they have to apply for a five day one.
That's the minimum, the minimum.
Yeah.
So Craig, have a second, Steve? We'll take role, Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Okay, uh, number six, motion to approve closing Main Street December third for Christmas City Celebration.
Yep.
Kyle and Steve? We'll take role, Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Motion to approve the street finance report.
That's just a yearly report we have to do and love. And Rochelle had that, well, she already had most of it done, and Rochelle was able to finish it up.
Craig, have a second. Kyle? Take role, Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
Steve?
Yep.
Motion to approve the annual finance reports.
That's a yearly, normal, regular year report too. They, they get submitted to the state.
Craig, do I have a second, Steve? Take role. Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Okay, motion to accept the resignation of Rebecca Gudcock from the library board. Okay, Kyle? Craig? Take role, Kyle? Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
And motion to approve Rachel Nixon did a library board. Craig, have a second, Steve? We'll take role, Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
Steve?
Yep.
Uh, motion to accept the resignation of Heather Tyne as library director. Kyle, have a second. Craig? Take role, Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
And Steve?
Yep.
Motion to approve Brenda Vasek as library director.
That is, um, after her background, after you guys approve it, I'll do the background checks, so that, what's that, all pending background, yes.
Pending background.
Yep.
Kyle? Steve? Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
Steve?
Yep.
Okay, motion to approve Rochelle attending budget workshop, November second, Craig? Steve? Take role, Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Yep.
Steve?
Yep.
Okay, ports. Ron, what do you got for us?
I didn't have anything in there, uh, apparently it's kind of running fine, uh, probably gonna, I put in one calls today to start doing the street signs, get the new street signs put up on Main Street.
Cool.
They'll probably, uh, well, we got the postal digger on the back of the tractor, we'll get the the guard rail down there on Jill and put back into. Other than I really don't get anything.
Okay. Do you have anything going on, since you're here?
Nope, I didn't see a boat.
Did you guys get the parking deals painted down there?
Yeah, I gotta get a, I've been wanting to put in a order for no parking, but I think I'll just, I looked the other day, you can get them on Amazon too.
You just gonna hang right in that hole or?
Let's put right on the till off of the pole.
Yep.
Not that people are gonna listen to it anyway.
No, they're not, but at least it's up.
Someone was parked by the Hawkins the other day, right in between the new, no parking signs, park your own direction, I go.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's one that the deputies running through town, hopefully they'll see that and check it out, but.
Our signs are up at least, so don't matter.
We, we've done our part, we've tried.
Okay, public safety and we have the sheriff report in there. Uh. What's that?
I said, my name ain't up there, even if it's stolen.
Jeez. Okay, moving on down, city clerk.
Um, I'm there, so we got contacted from EC Call who does the inspections for our properties here, and they are doing a training webinar tomorrow. Well, so in two days, today's the tenth day. On, um, rental property inspection, don't know if you're interested, I'm just letting you know that I'll watch the webinar and then I can report back to you guys to say, this is what it is, because I don't know if you can, if you can sit, I don't know how that, I don't know how it works at all. He just sent me an email and had talked to us about it during a meeting one time, and so I'm just letting you guys know, I'll watch that and then I'll report back to you next month on what it is, on if it's something you guys want or don't want, so that's all that is. And then for urban revitalization and tax maintenance, um, that is just, I think I put them in your thing, but that's these letters here that you guys have. So what that is, is it, it's for our revitalization, is the properties that submit an application to the city and then you guys approve them, if they're doing like building a new house or if they're improving a property, they get their taxes held for five years at that, at that level. And so what we have to do by law is submit a letter to, one goes to Kirkwood, one goes to Midland, one goes to Jones County and one goes to the city on how much we lost in taxes, so that's what these are. And then the other part, the other letter, that was for the revitalization, the other one is our TIF, this one here, you can read there, and that's how Dollar General has impacted, you know, what we're doing with them on, because we give them back their, the, the TIF money, um, to, to get them in here, we had to reimburse some tax money, and so that shows how it impacts those same entities. And if I, by law, so I sent those out, and I just wanted. And so that shows how it impacts those same entities and if I, by law. So I sent those out and I just wanted you guys to.
That's a yearly deal, we give back, right, or?
Yes, and up to a certain amount for, I think, twenty, up to twenty years, I think it is.
But there's a cap on it, so.
There's a cap, yes. You guys, there was a, it was voted on in twenty eighteen, I think is when they first started, or twenty twenty. And that's when it was approved. And I think this is the first year for some of it. It's because they had to build it and then it had to be done, then it had to be assessed. And so this is the first year that, at least for some of these type letters that they've been sent.
They gotta be in business for so long, or?
Yeah, well, and the taxes have to be there. And then we have to notify everybody on, on, they can't, so the schools and everybody have, they all have a right to know that we're doing it, but the city can do it because it, I mean, of course, the school loses some money, but the city and everybody benefits when we bring in, when we revitalize it. And that's what it is. And so we just notify everybody by law what they lost. And I think, do you wanna talk about the annual finance report or have they got it? Is it?
Um, no, I just finished both the, the big finance reports that we need to do annually. Um, and then I will be going to that budget planning. It's an advanced class and um just some work on budget.
Which we were told was gonna be.
Pretty gnarly this year.
Yeah, because of all the cuts. There's a, there's a lot of tax cuts and there's a lot of changes and there are legislative changes. So there's stuff that way. And then I went yesterday to TIF train and I'll do another one next week. And the state guy, TIF is, it's a whole nightmare, is what that is. But um he said that, and I have an urban renewal report coming due, too. And and uh, the state guys that deal with all this said the urban, urban renewal report is by far, and I thought we had bad ones already. The hardest report we'll ever do. So we're not looking forward to that. So we got that due, and then I have a TIF report due. Um, and so November, you'll have those on the agenda for you. I know it doesn't mean a whole lot, but they're pretty convoluted and pretty technical. And then next week, I go to the, a second part of my training. The clerk training for clerk school. So, um, and that's
Okay, you were next on the list? Okay, items for next agenda, due December first, annual urban renewal report, TIF reports. Okay, so, anything else for next agenda?
I'll put um.
If nothing else, motion to adjourn. Kyle, you have a second? Craig? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion care. Okay, shut the camera.